Are you ready? Okay. Welcome to the City of Groton Special Committee, the whole meeting for Monday, August 30th, 2021. Court Peters, please call the roll.
Thank you. Present, we have Mayor Keith Hedrick, Deputy Mayor Guinevere Depot, Counselor Lisa McCabe, Counselor Christine Piazza, Counselor Stephen Sheffield, Finance Director Ron Yuhas, City Clerk Megan Peters, and excused tonight is Counsel Rashad Carter and Counselor Paul Norris.
Okay. So, we're going to get started. We have a couple extras that we put on here that came up in the week, so we're going to get those knocked out first. The first one is Paquonic Road. And Heidi, that's you.
Hi, good evening, Counsel. So, we're happy to finally bring to you the resolution for the contract for Paquonic Road reconstruction. This project's been probably about two years in the works. We have finally gotten through DOT approval, and then subsequently, we needed the Connecticut Commission on Human Rights to provide their approval for the contractor. So, we have received both of those approvals. So, what we're asking of you is to approve the contract with B&amp;W Paving. I know this evening is just to present what we have and then answer any questions that you might have, but we would hope that, you know, moving forward at a subsequent meeting, that you would find that this is an appropriate contractor. So, I believe that we put in front of you a resolution. It's a draft resolution, which if you move it this evening, will be on your council agenda for next weekend. So, it is for a contract with B&amp;W. Their low bid was for $2,040,000, $2,040,000, $482.50. Ultimately, we've added in some contingencies. The city will be responsible for about $1,300 on that project, since there were some additional, what they call, non-participating items, that the city will be responsible for paying. So, out of the $2.2 million project, we will only be responsible for about $1,300.
Question from the council on this, Deputy Mayor Depot.
I know that we've asked this question probably every time that it's come up, but when do we anticipate the project starting, and how long do we anticipate it taking?
So, we don't have an anticipated start date yet. One of the things that we'll have to do is, once we get through this approval process, we will start the conversation with the contractor and getting all of those documents and getting the contract signed. Ultimately, we would have hoped to have been under contract earlier this summer. It just, timing, it didn't work out that way. I would hope by the end of September, we could at least have shovel in the ground and have a timeline for what we're able to get done for the fall season. We do have this contract written as a 200-day, a 200 calendar day contract. So, there will be a winter shutdown. We anticipate that to be sometime mid to end of November, depending on what the asphalt plant, how long they stay open for the season.
And have we talked to all of the businesses on that road? Like, are we going to put up additional signage for them so that we can say, like, parking for Buford's here, or this is the first one that comes to mind, but because there's several businesses on that road, like, when I go to Buford's, I park on the street. So, where, you know, people are going to have to find places to park. Do we plan on helping them with that, or just saying, this is when the problem's going to be, good luck?
I mean, I don't know so much that we're able to help in terms of where people can park. We have been in communication with all of the businesses multiple times. I've, you know, I've walked in, I've knocked on doors. We have actually mailed a letter to everyone who lives within the construction area, I believe just about two months ago, letting them know that we are hoping and anticipating that this project would start sometime this fall. So, there is a provision in the contract for the businesses, that the contractor is supposed to make every effort to ensure that businesses are accessible. What that means, I don't know yet. We'll have to have that conversation. Once we've, you know, once we get into discussions with the contractor, then we can kind of work out some of those details. But there is a provision specifically in the contract for the businesses to ensure that they're open and accessible.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel McCabe.
I mean, is the contractor going to be only working at certain areas in chunks, so that certain businesses would only be affected for a certain amount of time, and then the next, or how are these? Sorry, okay, I'll try this again. So, are they going to work on the road in certain areas at a time, so that different businesses might be affected at different times, or in, or how did they schedule this?
So, that's one of the things that we'll work out with the contractor. Once we have the contract signed, we'll have a pre-construction meeting. Because of timing going into this construction season, I'm not really sure how that's going to work out this fall. I mean, I think what we had hoped initially was that they would do sidewalks and drainage, dirt down the entire length of the project, then come back potentially in the spring and do, you know, any remaining drainage catch base and work, and then the paving. But again, because we're in a shortened season now, I'm not 100% sure how that's going to play out, but that'll be, absolutely be a discussion with our, in our first meeting with the contractor.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Counsel Piazza.
Thanks. Could you just remind me again about where the project starts and where it ends?
So, the project begins in five corners. It actually encompasses the five corners intersection, so it will go slightly into each of the surrounding roadways, and then we'll stop just prior to the Rainville intersection, so not to affect the state traffic loops for the traffic lights.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Okay. And then I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of, I think it's 9/7, let me verify that, of September 7th, 2021.
Second.
So, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Okay? Thank you, Heidi.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next one is going to be 7/58, police, Exxon body cameras and the Tri-Tech software systems chief.
There you make, thank you, Mayor and Council. This resolution comes to us for the body cameras, our Exxon. This is our actual third payment installment that we have budgeted in our budget already, for a total of $19,356.00. This is a, Exxon is a sole source provider for our body cameras, and this is our annual payment for software and equipment. We have a five-year plan, this is plan three, or year three.
Deputy Mayor Depot.
Is this also how we store the footage, so that we can access it? So, they store it securely? Because I know when we originally looked into it, it was like, it's all kinds of security protocols you need. So, that's the other reason why we contract them, so they...
CSGIS compliant software storage, and they control everything. We have access to it.
Right. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for the chief? Hearing none. I need a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of 9/7/21.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Tri-Tech Software Systems.
Yes, sir, this is another payment that we are, annual payment that we will make. It's also in our budget already. Computer aid dispatch system is our records management system, which contains all our reports, all our information that is what we work with. It's a total of $16,143.38. That's our payment for this fiscal year. And again, they are a sole source expenditure for us at this time.
Questions on the Tri-Tech Software Systems? Counsel McCabe.
Yeah, this is more for my information. The fingerprint interface, is that so, is that so we can connect to some sort of...
Central Square is the company that runs it for us. They have all our systems, and they do our updates and maintenance on it. Is that what your question was?
Well, I'm just wondering, it says fingerprint interface. I was just wondering if that was something we connect into a larger database of fingerprints across...
The fingerprint system, it used to be called the AFIS system. It's still called the AFIS system, but Central Square took it over. We just got the brand new machine in. So, now what happens is when we do fingerprints, it's an instantaneous response from the state and the federal, so we can get people's identification and records right.
Yeah, okay. That's what I was asking. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on this line? Okay. I'd like to have a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of 9/7/21.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Okay? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay, the next item is 7/96, Groton City Brewfest. The council had asked about what was the cost to the city of the Brewfest, so I have Jill here, she's on the committee. I've asked her to come in and brief the council.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for having me. So, there had, like the mayor said, there had been some questions about the Brewfest budget. I did provide it for you. It's a total of $9,431.93. That includes overtime, four hours of overtime for four officers, one sergeant, and support services assistant, and then eight hours of a park and rec employee. All of those expenses are being, are in the budget of this. Of that, $6,000 of that is getting paid by Groton Utilities. Groton Utilities had in their budget $6,000 for the Fall Festival. This is an event that is replacing the Fall Festival for the Groton, or for the Greater Mystic Chamber of Commerce. The rest of this budget will be paid by sponsors of the event, and then any proceeds of the event will be going to the Greater Mystic Chamber of Commerce. So, the city itself is not using tax dollars for this event at all.
Questions or comments regarding the Groton City Brewfest? This is our first annual, so this is good for us.
Right now, we have over 100 participants. Like, I believe the last count that I got was 120 participants. We're hoping for more, obviously, and we'd love to have a few more. And we have a number of breweries already on agreeing to come, so we're really looking forward to this event.
Deputy Mayor Depot.
I just want to say thank you for the breakdown, because I think this is exactly what we were looking for, and it's nice to know that the sponsorship's going to pay for it, because I know a lot of, you see a lot of events in different cities, and they're like, oh, we need to be reimbursed for, like, the police is a big fee, because it costs us a lot of money to have our police monitoring, especially for overtime. So, thank you. I think this is important for the residents to know, that we're doing this thing in cooperation with the Chamber of Commerce, and it's good for the city in general, but we're doing it without taxpayer dollars. So, thanks.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, that's it. All right, thank you, Jill.
Thank you.
All right, the next thing is 7/93, American Rescue Plan Act. This is informing and informational, and to get information from you. Ron, I'll let you lead off.
Good evening, Council. So, what we did, based on our, the last committee, the whole, where there's a lot of discussion, we had some presentations from other organizations, and there was a request to kind of come up with a plan for this, the money that we've received. So, what we did, working with the mayor and with Jill, is we kind of grouped the different buckets, per se. We're going to keep this very high level, not go into details as to certain organizations or anything like that, but just kind of the general thought process of where, where the council is and what means the most to them as far as these buckets go. So, Jill just handed out a sheet, and I don't have the one in front of me, I have to steal. Actually, I can.
That's it? You can have this.
I can put it back on pause. So, we put it into different buckets, and what we want from the council is to rank the bucket, five being your highest priority, one being your lowest, but you only can use the numbers once. So, there's going to be empty lines, so that way you don't, we don't want fives in all of them, or ones in all of them, or... So, it's kind of to just get an idea of the council. So, what we're going to ask you to do is, if you could go through and just take a couple minutes to fill this out, and what the buckets are, is residents, and to give back to something that had some sort of effect from the COVID-19. So, there's going to be the resident piece of it, there's going to be the small businesses, the nonprofits slash social services, and then we split that up to municipal social services as well. That'd be something with the town or a program that we did internally, as opposed to a nonprofit or outside organization doing it. Then we have tourism, travel, hospitality, which would be like an EDC, parks and rec program slash infrastructure, lost government services due to reduction in revenue, which we didn't really have a lot here in the city. There was no real, we didn't cut any services based on COVID. Infrastructure for water, infrastructure for sewer, and then infrastructure for broadband. So, if you want to just take a couple minutes, and I know it's kind of right on the spot, and this isn't a foolproof, it's just to kind of get an idea, and then what we're going to do is add those scores up, and we're going to just put them on the board, and then that way we'll see it as a total and not individuals, and then that'll kind of start the conversation to keep it very high level. What we just don't want to do is, we want to try to keep it high level and not get down into the weeds quite yet, and this will give us direction. Because as you are aware, like, we talked about the last meeting, we are trying to form a plan, but we want to make sure that we do incorporate what the council's interests are into that plan. So, what we want to do is take a couple minutes and rank the different categories, and you have the numbers, five being your highest priority, one being your lowest, but you can only use the numbers once. So, you're going to have some buckets that won't have anything in it, and then we're going to kind of group it together, so to see where the council's focuses are. And again, this is, like I said, a very high level. We're not going to get into which nonprofits, if that's the main focus, and it'll just help us internally build that plan.
Counsel Sheffield.
Ron, do we have a CIP set up for, you know, five-year plan, four- or five-year plan setup?
We do. It's not published online. We've always do it during the budget process. We are going to talk about, I believe, with the next committee of the whole.
Yeah, because, yeah, because I had the, I came across some of my old warrants and came across the CIP for 2015 to 2020. We're now into 2021. Do we have one going to 2026?
Yep, and then we can get that information. We, it's not finalized and published, but we do, like I said, as part of the budget process, those are part of that documentation.
Paul had sent out an email with a table of contents that was from, I think it was from 18 to 23, is what it was, it had the CIPs in it. And so, he had asked for an update on, a status update on the CIPs, and we're scheduled to give that in October.
Because that'd be something that would be perfect to set up in concert with the American Rescue Plan funds, as far as setting things up, and you can have your long-term plan, because you have four years to use the funds.
The one thing to just speak, which again, is kind of the big hurdle on which we've been struggling, is only certain CIP fall into eligible.
Okay.
So, that's kind of, they're very clear with water, sewer, infrastructure. Parks and rec kind of falls under that community section. It is where it appears to be falling into.
Right.
Which is allowing stuff to be done at parks and public places. And then also, public service seems to be another one, of building like emergency operations centers and policing, that type of stuff.
Counsel Sheffield is completing his.
So, for everybody out there, the highest was residential, followed by small businesses, then broadband, then tourism, travel, hospitality, then municipal social services, and then nonprofit social services.
Is broadband 14?
Yes.
Okay.
So, I guess, like I said, we wanted to keep it very high level. I mean, we do want to have a little bit of discussion, too. We don't want to say, here's your survey, here's your results, let's just, okay, now we have our direction. But it does appear that there is, it does give us a definite direction of, to where the focus is, with a lot of, the council being very consistent with their, with their selections.
Okay. Counsel McCabe.
Yeah, I thought I was probably going to be an island for the broadband, so I'm, you know, that one jumps out at me. I'm really interested to see what kind of projects you guys can bring to us in that area. What can we do to increase our broadband accessibility?
And just, that is something that the mayor and I have been in conversation with about broadband, and how do we do it, and what does it look like? And we're, it was definitely on our list, so it's good to see that it's up there.
Yeah, yeah. Good.
Deputy Mayor Depot.
I, I don't want to assume that you've already thought of this, but when, so when the projects are brought to us, can we maybe, like, label it which of these categories it's in? Which I know might seem like we should be able to figure that out, but sometimes it's kind of nice to say, oh, yeah, remember you guys, this was the top of your list, this was the most important thing on your survey, residential, whatever, and so that we can kind of see when we're getting them. I think that would be very helpful.
Yeah, we can build a spreadsheet from this.
Yeah.
This can be the topics, and then the sub underneath will be the projects, and then we'll keep tabs on what the projects are, maybe a small narrative, and then the cost.
And I also wanted to say, oh, sorry.
So, go ahead.
I also wanted to say, just like, for me, the ones that I didn't vote for doesn't mean that I wouldn't support any projects in those categories. It certainly depends on what the project is, so I just want to put that out there.
And I should have focused that. Even, even though the highest we vote at are in this little exercise, that may not be where the most funds are going to be expended either. It's just to make sure that we know the focus of where the council wants to go, to make sure we incorporate everything, and if, especially if there is something with a zero, but there is a great plan or program that we can do, we're obviously going to look into it and try.
You guys both love this one.
Okay. Well, I just, one other thing I was thinking, because we've, we've had discussions, and it's been brought up, that the town might be doing projects with their funds that impact the city. Is it possible to maybe work with them to, even if it's just like a list of like, here's some of the funds we're spending that will impact city residents in particular? Because obviously, everything the town does impacts city residents in one way or the other, but I think it'd be nice if we could have a breakdown of something that impacts us, like, very directly, or maybe geographically directly, or something like that. I know that would be more work for them, but I know you have a good relationship with the town manager, so maybe we could do that.
I do, and I am on the Long Term Recovery Committee, and the Long Term Recovery Committee last meeting, we had talked to many of the outside agencies that they already fund. So, they brought them in to interview them. I talked to John last week about, do you, does the town have a list yet? And the town doesn't have a list that they've taken, that they're ready to take to the council. They're in the process of assembling the list. And then, once we get the list of, for example, the nonprofits and service agencies, then I'll bring that list to you guys, because I'm fairly sure they're looking at increasing social services with March Fondue. Now, that gets funded by the town, and it gets funded by the town to support the town and the city. The city could choose, if they wanted to, to add additional funds to that, or you could add additional funds to that with no ties, or you could add additional funds and earmark... with no ties. Or you could add additional funds and earmark it for city ground residents. Now, before I talk to you about those social services, I'll bring Marge Fondouas in so that she can present to the council and talk about the kinds of services that she offers, right? Because that's a government agency, Legislite's a government agency, SCOG is a government agency. Let's see, the Cultural Coalition, they have an ask that at some point will be brought to you. They also talk about mental health programs. We're trying to figure out who that, who that would fall under. And GASP is also interested. So those are the kind of agencies. And then we also have the other nonprofits that are social services as well, that once we get a list, then we'll bring them, we will bring them to you to present. Sorry, Councillor McCabe?
Yes, just, just so any viewers were watching, could you kind of give sort of a definition or a difference between residential or residence column and municipal social services? How do they, how do those things differ? Like what kind of projects would fall under each of those?
Okay. So when we, let me get to the, to the topics here. So when you have nonprofit social services and municipal social services, so the municipal social services are things like Legislite, the Southeastern Connecticut Council of Governments, the actual social services with Marge Fondouas, those kinds of things. And then nonprofits are also socials that provide social services are the ones I just mentioned here are government agencies. The nonprofits are things like, I think gas falls under that, Community Speaks Out, Soup Kitchen, Community Meals, those kind of things. Those are nonprofits, and they provide services for people.
What about residential? Our section for residential?
So the section for residential, when you get into that, that talks about.
Because I think some of the social services do support people negatively, negatively impacted.
Right. But the, so under the acceptable use of funds for local government under the American Rescue Plan, in to respond to the public health emergency with respect to COVID-19, or its negative economic impacts, including assistance to households, small businesses and nonprofits, or aid in impacted industries such as tourism, travel, and hospitality. So when you're looking at the residential, you're talking about, you know, would we do loans? Would we do loans for small businesses and those kind of things? We already have a, not a loan, sorry, grants. Loans are a challenge, and we don't have a program set up for loans.
Correct.
But grants for residents, and then the question that we're asking here, and I'm going to talk to John about how they're looking to do it, is how do you qualify? What kind of forms do you fill out? What proof do you need?
Right, right, right.
What is your priority on, on doing that, on using those, on using those funds? So that's the thing behind the residential. And then you also have the businesses. We have a business facade program that we could also, we could expand that, one, you could add to that. But you could also expand that using criteria, that hasn't been developed yet, but using criteria to determine if somebody was, if a business was negatively impacted due to COVID. Does that kind of answer your question?
Yeah, yeah. Yes, it does answer my question. It almost makes more, but just in terms of how.
Well, I'm sure it is. I mean, this, this gets, it gets complicated for this council because we do not have our own social services, right? We do not have our own school system. We do not have, there's other programs that we do not have that the town provides as part of the tax base, based on the funds that District Two and District Three provide to the town. So that's going to be a question that the council needs to answer, is what are you willing to, what are you willing to and interested in providing funds for that is the town's responsibility? Right? Because you may take, you may take the stance that, okay, it's a town service, the town's responsible to do that, and take that stance. Or you may take the stance that, yes, we recognize that the town is responsible for that, and that's, that's based on the way things are set up. But because of either who they are, or what services they have provided during COVID, we may want to supplement them from the city. So, and I'm not sure where the council's going to be that. That's going to be a discussion that you guys will need to have, and then provide guidance on where we want to go. We're going to come to you with some programs. The, the brick and mortar stuff's pretty easy. Once we find the projects, we're going to come to you with a brick and mortar. And you'll say, well, you know, you'll get the details on that, how long, how much, what's it going to do, what's the ROI, those kind of things. We can provide that to you. The soft things, for example, the social services is harder. And so, you know, it's a little more squishy. And so to put, excuse me, solid values on that is difficult. I mean, you know, you may decide that, that the ambulance services need some extra funds. I mean, I'm just throwing that out there because I'm thinking of people that tend to come asking for money during the budget season, asking for support. So, and that'll be, that'll be a decision that the council make. Councillor Norris?
Thank you very much, Mayorin Ryan, for starting this conversation. Just one thing that I think I would like to add to this is during COVID, we know that it created a lot of family devastation in terms of social engagement, and also with wellness. For example, folks that may have had some precondition illnesses, or those that may have got COVID and trying to recover long haulers, so to speak, is that somewhere in this plan, do we talk about how do we get city residents to socially engage again with themselves, their neighborhood and outside, as well as their fitness levels, dealing with wellness type issues?
Which, and I think that may fall into a couple of the buckets, like you said, with that, with the social services, whether it's a nonprofit for a municipal, as well as the tourism, travel, hospitality, which allows that park and community guideline. So I think
Right.
that definitely is a great topic, because it's definitely, you can see it, and I think we can have that fall into a couple.
So the parks and rec part of it could be, one, additional programming that we're not providing now, or expansion of programming that we have. And it could also be an expansion of physical park activities. Because we have parks in the city that are just open landscapes for walking, or sitting, or those kind of things. So the question is, do you want to put something on those? You know, a playscape or something like that? I don't know. I have a splash pad, if you will. That's one of the things that we're looking at now. But I have Parks and Rec director evaluating those kinds of things. And once we, so I, I think I, we can put items in a bucket that are city items, and come to you with those things. And then if they're outside agencies, sometimes, for example, last week I brought you Legislite and Southeastern Connecticut Council of Governments, because they had sent a letter, and there was a sense of urgency. And so that's why I brought those to you. The MS4 could have waited until later, but I wanted to bring that to you as a, as a type of project that fits under the infrastructure. So, but what we will probably do at this point, based on the reaction from last time, is that we may bring external requests to you. But I will probably not bring the, the city infrastructure projects to you until I have a list of them, and have them all, so you can look at all of them. So to try to minimize any confusion, or questions, or anything else. Councillor McCabe?
And thinking about what Councillor Norris just said, do we have any parks and rec programs for adults that would kind of bring some of that, you know, getting people back out and socializing in an outdoor environment, some sort of gatherings or walks? Like, I know Sierra's trying to get the walk ability, to get groups and, and just meet once a week, or something like that, that might bring people together that have been struggling?
Sure. She's, she's working on that. We've had the concerts in the park. So that's one thing. We have the farmer's market that we have every Tuesday, so that helps. I can talk to Mary to see if she has any adult programming scheduled for the fall. I know that, you know, they're having an outing like for the Rockettes or whatever, but that's not
Those are events.
That's a trip. That's a single
Right, right, right.
thing. You're talking about more of every week, people get together and
Right.
interact and do something. I do know that, that it's slowed down now. But before, we're doing yogas in, yoga in the park.
Yoga, right, right.
Yoga to beach, yoga here, those kind of things. But I'll ask Mary about programming for adults.
Backgammon. I don't know. Just, just anything to gather people together. It doesn't. But, but geared towards adults.
Sure.
Okay.
Did you have your, okay. Councillor Biaza?
I just wanted to say that with these items here, I've done a few phone calls that Representative Courtney has had. And so it seems very similar amongst all the towns, all the, I mean, there's thousands of callers on there. But some you know where they're calling from, some you don't. But a large amount of them concerns, even when it's during the American Rescue Act, or if you're speaking of anything about COVID or anything outside, there always seems to be a majority of the calls in reference to things that the residents are struggling from. And the other one is broadband. That, those seem to be the really two top things. So it's nice to see that these kind of hit the top list. So it obviously is trickling all through the different towns and cities. So I just wanted to mention that. Seems to be like we're right on target with that.
So when we talk about broadband, we've already started talking about that. Broadband is going to be a challenge. Because where do you take broadband? Because the municipality doesn't have jurisdiction in private locations, right? So we can take it into public locations. For example, the beach, we've, we do have some Wi-Fi down there now, and we will continue to expand that. But, you know, who does that benefit? And when does it benefit people? And then you look at other parks, for example, Griswold Point. If we expand, if you try, if you expand Wi-Fi to hotspot down there, who is that benefiting? And if you go to Slocum Terrace, who does that benefit? And then if you come to Washington Park, who does that benefit? And will it be used? And then lastly, we looked at coming here inside, and the 5G, doing the upgrade for broadband here would be looked at for a couple of different ways. One, where the expansion may be into the auditorium, where it could be used. But then you talk about, well, if it's going to be in the auditorium, and we want people to use it, who's going to staff it on the weekends? Who's going to cover that? You know, those kind of funds and things like that. The other thing that we're looking at is possibly expanding the broadband for the EOC, for an immersive operations center that's here, out of this room that we operate. So we are looking at those kinds of things. And we're looking, looking at the expansion and seeing where we can do that. So if you do have ideas or suggestions, or if you, if people come to you and say, hey, have they thought about this? Get it to me. Send me an email. Let me know. And, you know, we'll gather that information, and we'll present it to the council as talking points, and we'll go from there. I know one of the things that Sue talked about was the cybersecurity at the water treatment plant. So we're going to take a look at that. And that's it as far as broadband goes. So we are looking at those kinds of things. Any other questions or comments regarding this? Okay. Then we will move on. So the next thing is goal setting. Jill, could you do me a favor? Councillor Norris sent an email this afternoon, and he had his, would you mind running copy so we just give it to the council? I meant to do that before I came in, and I did not get to it. So with the goal setting, this is the council's opportunity to decide, you know, what, what kinds of things are you interested in? And they don't necessarily, it can be detailed down to, I want to see this specific thing accomplished. Or it could be a larger topic, and then the council gets involved, and then dissects it and figures out where to go with that. So this is finding out where you guys want to go, what is important to you. And then that way, I can see how that corresponds with what I'm doing, and where the city's going now, and whether or not I need to adjust, or need to come to you and say, okay, I hear what you want to do here, but here's how we're going in this direction. And it may be in a similar direction, it may be a little bit different. So anybody want to start? Well, it's just, you, you don't, you, you do not, you do not have, I wanted to continue this moving. If you want to wait until Councillor Norris's goals are there, but those are his goals. And that's his opinion on, that's where he, he sees priorities. But does anybody else have any thing that they were thinking about?
Do you want to wait for Jill to come back?
I can take over. You guys want to start talking?
Okay. Thank you, Megan. Okay, anyone? Deputy Mayor Depo?
Okay. Well, I've been thinking about it for a while, and thinking about some things. And I was actually thinking about the things that we've already accomplished. And so as not to repeat those as goals. For example, you know, I'm really happy we have the newsletter, because increasing engagement
Thank you.
has been kind of high on our list the last couple of years. But I think there are some areas that I would still like to increase engagement. We have the PACT Committee that is the Police and Community Together Committee, and the membership on that has kind of dwindled a bit. And I'd like to see if we can, I don't know how we would do this, maybe even if we were to design a logo for it that was a little more catchy to get some younger people involved. Because what it is now is it's a lot of people who volunteer a lot already, are engaged already in the community, and are always available, which is great. But I'd like to maybe see even, you know, we have certain volunteers on that committee who will volunteer at stuff, and we'll introduce them and to another community person. And they're like, oh, this person is cool. And they'll kind of learn from them about engaging and volunteering in the community. So I kind of would like to see if we can find a way to get some younger people on that committee to engage. And I don't really know exactly how to do that. But I think it would be a big benefit to that committee.
Okay.
That's a good idea. Food. Food brings people. It is a good idea. Are we just, do we want to go like council by council, just like list stuff, or do you want to go one?
Anybody else have anything at this point? If you don't, then I'll let Deputy Mayor Depo continue.
The other thing is, I know that we have, United Way canceled the next food box distribution. I would like to see if we can, I don't know if it has to be through United Way or somewhere else. But I think that considering the number of people we had at the last food box distribution, I would like to see if we could continue that as a monthly thing.
Okay. Jill, would you like to provide them with the good news? Okay. Jill, would you like to provide them with the, with the good news?
I would love to. Um, so as Deputy Mayor Depot said, we, um, were cut as one of the sites for the United Way. Um, they have decreased down to four sites. Unfortunately, we were not chosen as one of those sites. Um, hopefully we will be reinstated the following month, so we're hoping that in October, we'll be back as a regular United Way site. Um, in the meantime, they have the option of sponsorship. And Groton Utilities, um, will be sponsoring our next food distribution site. Um, there is nothing better than giving back to your own community, and that is the reason why, um, Groton, one of the reasons of Groton Utilities is to give back to our community. And we, we really couldn't think of a better way than for this food box distribution is desperately needed. Um, anyone who was at our site, Deputy Mayor Depot was able to come, um, and we were packed. Um, we were nonstop for about two and a half, three hours, um, or two, two hours, um, nonstop, we were down the road. And, um, we ran out of food, to be honest. Um, so if there are other agencies who would like to donate, um, the United Way, um, does take donations, you can specify a site. Um, the, the city of Groton is a great site to give to, so this month we will be covered. It will be September 24th. Is that the right date? I'm sorry, it's the last Friday in September, so I believe it's September 24th.
September 24th.
September 24th from 12:30 to 2:30, and that will be compliments of, um, Groton Utilities through the United Way.
So if you're out there in the television audience and you're philanthropic. And you want to either do this yourself or get together with some other people or other businesses. And sponsor a food drive, call Jill at 860-446-4103. And she can give you the information and we can work with you to, uh, sponsor a food drive from the United Way here in the city of Groton. It would be greatly appreciated. You, it is. Food insecurity is still here. COVID did not help that. And we had a lot of people coming through, I mean, we were bumper to bumper, uh, for a couple of hours. Uh, giving food out and we were moving as fast as we could and, uh, we were flat out for two hours. So if you, if you, if this is something that you're interested in, please sponsor an event. So that's good news. All right? So we have it for a month. Can't, I can't promise you October yet, but we have September, so we'll go month to month. All right, anybody else? All right, Councilor McCabe?
Yeah, I just, I'd like to see, um, things that are more community building. Um, and I, I see Councilor Norris has like strong neighborhoods, but things like, uh, a community garden. Uh, where, where we can engage, you know, all ages hopefully. And include, including the, if we can get younger people to get involved in that. They could be potential volunteers or, you know, so it kind of feeds back into increasing our engagement. Um, other things is, uh, that I, off the top of my head for community building is even getting, um, like Christmas light display going around the, 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 um, municipal parking lot. And we could even have, um, families sponsor and build their own displays. And, and maybe have a plaque with their, you know, you know, the McCabe family, you know.
Hmm.
Sponsored by kind of thing, things like that, just to, to build that sense of home right here in Groton City.
Jill, would you like to give them the news about Christmas lights?
I like this job. This is great. I get all the good news. Um, so what we did learn is that, um, Pfizer will be sponsoring the Chris, or the Holiday Lights event again this year. The city will be, um, helping with that. We will be, um, dressing up and, um, helping, um, probably collect food again this year. But, um, that will be happening again this year, but I understand your interest. Um, one of the things that first came to mind was, um, Halloween. Um, Parks and Rec used to always do an event at Halloween where you could decorate your trunk. Um, I don't know that that's back this year, um, due to increased levels of COVID. But, um, that's definitely something that we can, can talk about too.
Also maybe, um, I noticed in my neighborhood, uh, when I first moved in, there was a street sign on one of the streets. It said, you know, winner of the Christmas, the, yeah, the mayor's Christmas. And I was like, I want to get into that. Where do I sign up?
So the, what we've done in the past, we haven't done it in the last couple of years. But what we've done in the past is when during, during Christmas time, when people put up their lights. Then we assign a, a basically a committee. And then they go around, they judge Christmas lights in certain categories. And then we, uh, provide, you know, we give them a plaque. And, uh, similar to what we did last year when we judged the Halloween decorations, those kinds of things. So we did, we have, we've done that in the past. We didn't do it last year, the year before, I don't think. So, but that's, that's something too. So anyway, I want to thank Pfizer for continuing to do the Holiday Light, uh, what's it, a festival?
Holiday Light Event, I believe.
Holiday Light Event that you did last year, if you're going to do again this year, that was, it was tremendous. We had a lot of, uh, a lot of support, a lot of positive feedback. Uh, I volunteered last year, had an absolute blast. So it was a, a great time. We collected a lot of food for, uh, Gemaran Food Center.
It was a wonderful event.
It was.
Absolutely wonderful. I, I enjoyed it so much and was so proud to have that here in our city.
Oh, absolutely. Okay, so what else? We're on a roll. All right, let's take a look at, are you ready? Go ahead. Okay, go ahead.
Realize conversation. Um, another thing that I think, you know, uh, right now, as we probably all know, the town council is going through an election cycle. I would like to, once the new council is seated, I would like to go back to having periodic joint meetings with the council like we were doing before. I think that I, even just watching, um, topics that are coming up. It's, we have our meetings here, it's hard to also watch all of their meetings there. So I'd like to go back to being kind of better communicating with the town council with what's going on there. Because again, all of their stuff affects us, and I feel like we were moving in that direction and then COVID happened. So we kind of got off the rails of having those extra meetings. But, um, I, I think that those were helpful in kind of a community aspect of us working with the town council. Or at least being aware and the town council being aware of what we're doing. Um, because I think that makes us, both of these bodies work better when we know what the other one's doing.
I had talked to John Bird and, uh, Mayor Granatowski about recommencing that. And we were, we were getting ready to start, and then the Delta variant peeked its head out. So we said, okay, we're not going to do that. And then, uh, Mayor Granatowski was concerned about if we had a joint meeting right now, it might look, uh, political. And so we didn't want, we decided not to do that, but that, but that's a good idea. We do intend to go back to that. Um, we'd like to get it person, you know, in person and not, uh, Zoom. Because even, even our own Zoom meetings were sometimes awkward. So now you throw nine of them and six of us together, you know, in a Hollywood Squares kind of thing. You don't know who you're talking to and some people don't like to turn their videos on. So, so that's, you know, to get a productive meeting, that's a challenge, but I agree with you. Uh, I want to get back to that because they were productive and they did work, they did go a ways. In solidifying camaraderie between the city and town, which is important. Anyone else? All right, Paul, let's, I'm sorry, Councilor Norris?
Paul is fine.
No, it's not.
Um, so that your hand doesn't, doesn't get tied and I promise each one of these with like 10 seconds. But just some quick, uh, quick things, you know, it's talk, thinking about economic growth and also helping administrative services. And particularly for parks and recreation down at the beach. That if we had a more robust, um, internet fiber optic system where they could do registrations. Beach passes, daily sales right there, it's integrated directly into the system. And, uh, easier to track who's in, who's out and real. And then that could also be an economic impact dealing with outside groups and agencies and nonprofits, whoever it is. That now can hopefully rent the Zaburski House, um, because that would be an attraction.
Well, and that's also consistent with, I'm trying to get us out of cash. I don't like cash. One, cash is dirty. Two, when you start handing, you know, this person has cash and this person has cash and this person has cash. The handoffs are where the challenges are.
Yep.
And where you can lose money. And also, uh, I want to eliminate any temptation, you know, we hire good people and we have great employees here. But, uh, that doesn't mean that they're not human.
Right.
And so we go to, I am, one of the things that I've been driving is going to point of sale across, across the whole enterprise. Uh, Groton Utilities did it with the MyPay, and so we're going to continue doing it here. And as part of my push for point of sale and then eventually trying to get to paperless.
Right. Thank you. And then moving forward, uh, sticking with the same concept of competitive and sustainable economy. Is potentially putting together some type of summer youth employment program. Um, where we would hire a handful of kids, um, either work within various departments in the town, maybe city, sorry. Maybe public works or at the beach, but it's a younger age group. So it's that age group that aren't quite 16, 17, that can be camp councils, for example. But how do we get the eighth graders or the ninth graders to start to think about job opportunities and job counseling, that kind of stuff? And then, um, moving on, thinking about, uh, so every September is senior, National Senior Month. And I was thinking maybe in the future, I know the town does things for seniors. But is this an opportunity for the seniors to do some type of activity or special event, lunch, whatever it is. For, um, Groton City seniors. Um, in terms of hardware, I was looking at a couple of place gates and around the city. And it would be nice if we could look at replacing some of the swing sets that may be pushing 20 years and older. Um, Another thought I had was driving to work one day, I noticed right in front on Route 17, 117. Where the Groton Senior Center is at the library, they have like a digital information center. And I just think right here where this municipal building is right on the corner would be a perfect idea for something like that. Uh, the city does an amazing job of putting out information on that green space there. Um, just thinking if we also could digitize some portion of it would be pretty cool.
Hold on, Director Yost?
And, um, this is the same topic, but different location. I believe Utilities does have it in the budget to put one in front of the operations complex. Again, different location, it'd be in front of operations on McQuonik Road, but they were talking about a digital sign, which obviously we'd be able to use as well.
Right.
But again, it doesn't put it in that same location, but just so you're aware of.
But that would get some information out in that part of town. And then putting it here, uh, would be a good, you know, that would be a good thing to put out digital information here. We'd have to, you know, figure it out, get somebody to check it out, which way do you turn it, where is it? Is it in the corner, is it in the middle, you know, those kinds of things, but I think it's a good idea.
And with that, I can check with Dan to see where they are after that. And if that's something that we're interested in doing here as well to do it as together.
Well, I agree, you may get, you may get a cheaper rate.
Yeah, so let me, let me talk to Dan to see where they're at with that.
Okay.
There's just so many amazing things that happen in the city and the different ways we can get it out.
Sure.
Um, along with that, the, um, I know Councilperson McCabe is working on, um, an ordinance possibly about solid waste. So that's on, I have that on here and that's going forward. And then the last two things is, and I don't know how this would play out. One be if we could potentially have with council a pre-budget 101. Um, identifying what the assumptions are for, so for example, staff will receive X number of dollar pay or percentage increase. So we already have that in our brains, so we're not asking different departments how they came up with, uh, dollars. Or, um, how, what is the, um, expected increases due to medical, you know, and, and healthcare? How does, so just those bullet points that we can at least wrap our head around that. So when we start to meet with the departments, it's a question we don't need to ask because it's already there. And then the most challenging one is that I wrestled with. Um, I absolutely loved the day we went out and we picked up litter on our streets. It was absolutely a smashing time to meet folks. They literally came out of their houses and asked, hi, who are you, why are you doing this? And, and I, I just think if we could do some other type of activity, could be the same thing. That involves implementing a council member driven engagement process. It, I don't know, maybe we go pick up litter three times a year, you know, I thought that was pretty cool.
Well, we, I think we tied it into Earth Day, if I remember correctly, but we could. One of the things that, that, uh, we've been looking at in the mayor's office is the greening of Groton, right? And so that, but that ends up, you start, our thought is you start in the water and you work your way back, right? We get plastics and styrofoam and other stuff in the water, how does it get in there, what's the pathways? You work your way back and eventually you come up with some kind of an ordinance that addresses certain things. But tying in with that could be, we go around and we collect, we, we clean up certain streets. And we collect and analyze the, the debris that we have. And that may help give us some guidance on where to go with our ordinances and our direction on the greening of Groton.
And if I can add to that, I already know you do a very good job of getting around to our local businesses. Um, I, I think it would be a, a, a good thing also. If potentially having a discussion where we broke out into teams and just visited our local businesses, just go in, say hi. Um, how are you doing? How can we help? Is business good? How can we, uh, be in touch? So I think that would be another good idea. But as I said, I know m- most of you or some of you already do that. I would just like all of us to hit it as a team. Thank you.
And Deputy Mayor Depot?
Um, to piggyback on the garbage picking up, I just had an idea, which is kind of a more specific idea, but, um, what if we did something like, you know how they do like the reading program at the library? Like if you read so many books, you get like an award? What if we did like a garbage pickup program where we supplied the little garbage grabber things? And we did like a season, so like maybe the spring or the fall. And people could come to the municipal building, get their pickup thing, and they go on their hike and then they bring it back and they get like points or something. And then we do like awards for people doing that. Because for me, I know if I go on a hike, I'm not immediately thinking, oh, let me grab a trash bag. Uh, and some people are very good about it. People, I know several people who always bring a trash bag when they go on a hike and they pick up trash. Um, but I think if we kind of made that more in the forefront of people's minds and said, hey, we, we'll give you the supplies. Here's a little grabber thing and a couple of trash bags, and then you'll get, you know, recognition for doing it. Uh, I think that, that, oh yeah, you could reward people with a beach pass, no?
Or, or a lottery to win.
Sure.
Yeah, um, I think that would be cool because I do think that that would increase engagement, just putting it out there and saying, hey, here's a program, like when we did the scarecrows, it was a contest. And it makes more people want to do it because you can win something and it makes it more fun. So that, that might be something we could do.
I agree. And you get into community engagement and it's about us getting involved in our community. It's our community getting involved with the community and making the city of Groton a better place to live, right? I would love to have a waiting list of people trying to get into the city to live. Because we, here on the council, you know what a gem the city is, okay? We have our blemishes just like everybody else, and there are people out there that, that are geared to want to focus on the blemishes. And they overlook the gems. We have a lot of gems here and we have areas that we're going to work on and we're going to continue to work on. Sometimes things take some challenges, uh, take some time. One of the things that I'm going to do in the next week is I'm going to put out a video on blight. Because that seems to. going to put out a video on blight, because that seems to have, uh, gained some traction on Facebook, and there's some confusion on what blight is. People don't understand what blight is. They're like, well, it doesn't look like my house, so it's gotta be blighted, or I don't like this, or I think that's wrong, so it's gotta be blight. They don't understand what real blight is. The other, another challenge that we have there is that instead, we've, somewhere along the line, some people have lost that neighborly instinct, and instead of going and helping your neighbors, we file a blight complaint, right? Because some of the people that, that have blight issues are, uh, we have some older people, older fixed income folks, and in the past, we have, uh, paired them with service agencies, Boy Scouts, other people that have helped them with that. And then you have other people who are just trying to, to skirt the issue and are taking advantage of the, any holes that may be in the blight situation, blight ordinance. And so, uh, you know, I'm going to do a, a video and talk a little bit about that because, uh, and here's the other thing. People think that if you have a boarded up building, that's blight. It's not blight. It's not pretty, and it's not what we want. We want all of our storefronts feel, filled with stores and with businesses. But just because a, a storefront doesn't have people in it, doesn't automatically make it blight. There may be things, other things that are going on that get it over into blight, but, you know, we are working as economic development in order to get those filled. So, that's it. Anything else on goals?
Um, just one thing that you guys had talked about was the garbage pickup. We, um, I have been in communications with the Town of Groton, um, Beautification Committee about doing a fall garbage pickup, um, hopefully in October. So, we'd love some help. We'd love some help from everybody out there, and we'd love some help from you guys. So, um, and if there's a counselor who would like to champion that, um, I'm happy to work with them and kind of pass over the reins on that. So, um, just give me a call and let me know.
Okay. Anything else from council? Councilor Piazza?
Thank you. I, I think I'd like, uh, for the goals, I'm looking back as far as, uh, chairing the, the community committee. And, um, I think it's always been on my heart. I've worked with youth a lot, and I, I've, I do find in Groton City, uh, speaking with youth, having children myself, that there just doesn't seem to be available, um, assets for them to use. And I know long ago, before I was even on the council, they had a, um, it was down actually at Washington Park, and they had, uh, boards such as this, and what would you like to do with these places and so forth. And one of the things that a lot of youth had said was like a social cafe with internet access, because some of them don't have them all the time at home, and I thought that would be a great place, um, on Thame Street to have, you know, where they come and go. Of course, you have to have, you know, it's a long time planning, but that came up a lot with youth, is something like that. Um, but then again, too, I mean, we do have a basketball court here. I know our base, our, um, baseball fields are used. Um, but also too, you know, do, I don't, I'm not sure if we do, if we have any basketball leagues per se that actually, um, play at Washington Park. And I, I know, um, some people, my family used to play at West Side. It wasn't actually a set-up league, but they did have teams. And I thought, geez, you know, people are down there all the time. Why can't we have teams play down here just as much as that? But I'd really like to see something going with the youth. My other heart is the military. So, I mean, even with the present situation going on with, you know, it's flooded with Facebook and all kinds of social platforms as far as, uh, the soldiers that we just lost. Uh, you know, when we look within our city, what have we done in reference to that? You know, um, how have we honored these soldiers that we just lost? We lose soldiers all the time. Um, unfortunately, I mean, we hear this more because on the social platform, it's a big thing that's going on now overseas, but, you know, so what do we do? You know, could we develop a team, um, you know, be more involved with the military where they're hurting, but also be more involved when there is a loss in the family? And could we develop a team that actually, we would have a point of contact, and we could actually go in and be a, a representative for the city and see what their needs are in those moments. Um, but, you know, uh, how do we pay tribute? I mean, because I live close to Fort Griswold, I see the flags at, at half-mast. Um, today, when we're coming over the bridge, my daughter and I, they actually had a crane out in the water, and they actually had a flag flying, but it was at half-mast. And trust me, as a veteran, to see that was like, really touched my heart a lot. Um, so I just wanted to say that I think military is a big thing. If we could have a military thing at Washington Park, it's a beautiful place to have a lot of things. And then my other heart is also for culture. Um, you know, I saw that we had the, um, Peruvian flag lifted, so, um, how could we get, um, festivals? And Washington Park is such a great site to have it. Um, you know, festivals, food, to, um, celebrate, uh, a large part of, uh, a lot of the culture we have here in our community. I think that would be a great planning thing to do, you know, and just, here's this culture, and we could, um, then that way we can actually interact with, you know, the people in the city, people with cultures, people that they would like to see, things within the community. And it's a large part of, when I've been a volunteer, either a leader of a nonprofit or just being involved in it, a large part, people want to volunteer, it's just they don't know how to get there. You know, they just don't know how to do it. And I, so I think that's one of our, I'm not, I'm not gonna say it's a weakness here, but I was even talking to my daughter about it. It's like, how do you think we could actually get more youth involved in the community? How do, what would, what would inspire you to want to be involved in the community? And of course, and speaking to her and her friends, what it goes back to is what they enjoy. And of course, it's either art or some kind of sport, or it's, uh, some kind of social gathering in some way. So, you know, and so that's what I'm saying is like, you know, if we start with food and get them all together, you know, you know, it could go from there. So, those are my big ones I would really like to develop and see happen.
One of the things that I've challenged Mary to do is to look at expanding programming and the age groups of fourteen to seventeen, because it's a seventeen-year-old level. We expect them to be doing camp counselors and helping with that kind of stuff. And it, and at fourteen, they're too old to be in the camps, or typically they are. So, we have, uh, we do, and the town has a gap in programming for fourteen to seventeen-year-olds. And I think that's something that, uh, we could take a look at to try to target, um, in order to fill that in. So, I agree with you on the, on that aspect of the youth, uh, those ages. So, anything else, Deputy Mayor Depot?
To combine two ideas that Paul, uh, Councilor Norris and Councilor Piazza had, and our seemingly renewed relationship with the Chamber of Commerce, um, would it be possible to maybe do a social with young kids and have the Chamber of Commerce pull in people who have different, um, occupations? And you could do like a, like not like a job fair, because they're not old enough, but maybe like something to see what they're interested. Look at all these people with these different careers, and, um, that might be kind of a cool thing we could host somewhere, I don't know, with food. But I think, I mean, you know, the Chamber of Commerce seems to be wanting to engage the city of Groton, um, more than they had in the past, and I think that'd be kind of a great kind of thing to work in with them as well.
Okay. Ron?
So, not so much a job fair, but like a business after hours type event, similar what they do, but for kids with, with people with different occupations.
Right.
Okay. Anyone else? Councilor Piazza?
Thank you. I just wanted to bounce off of Deputy Mayor, uh, Depot saying that. Uh, I will say that our MMS for my daughter went, they did have one person that was there who engaged the younger students, um, to visit other colleges. So, they would go as a group and go to the other colleges, because statistically, they found that the younger they are, when they engage in a college setting, the more apt they are to go to college. So, that might be, that, the job thing is a really great idea, um, you know, and I think, like, you know, we should have that just as far as, uh, that we did go to Avery Point, that was one of the settings, and Con College, by meaning, you know, what do we have here educationally? What do we have here as far as jobs and so forth? Um, and I think my other thing would be too, just to say one more thing, is, um, I guess it's bouncing off of our losses for our, um, military, is it's, it's been in my heart for a long time, and I would like, one of my goals here is to, um, having experienced grief quite a bit myself, um, and I'm sure others have here, is I would like for us to establish, I'm not sure if a chapter or, um, would actually be, I'm not sure it would be a committee, but one of the biggest things that, um, so I belong to a group as far as, um, it's a loss of an adult child. But in there, I think, looking what, what people need is just if we could develop here, um, if we have, well, I want to do basically is to start out in our county, maybe we could even start out in Groton City. So, if we have a loss, is that there is a point of contact and that we could actually reach out to them. So, I'd like to have some type of chapter like that, because, you know, we have a lot of behavioral health. We have a lot of things going on mental health-wise, but it is something I'm, that I am looking at that I would like to.
Are you talking about general loss, a specific category?
General loss could be, I think you have to start.
Or are you talking, so basically a support group for when someone dies, someone can reach out, you know, the group reaches out to the family?
Mm-hmm.
Is that what you're, that's what you're thinking?
Yeah, we could even, I mean, I, I go, I've been to a grief support place out in Iannic. It's a lot, a lot of people know about it. But I mean, it's, uh, the Brian Dagel Foundation. It's large. I mean, it'd be great to have something like that over here, you know, because some people just can't get over that way in Iannic. So, that would be great, you know. But I mean, just to start out small like that, that we actually have, you know, a point of contact in some way, you know, I mean, usually the churches are so forth, but I mean, you know, and your family and so forth. I think just walking through it's just nice to have something more objective, you know, and, um, in that way, it's, it's still in the developing process, but just something I'd really like to do. So, and my, one more thing would be, um, I am a speaker for organ tissue donation, and I know there's different opinions about that, but I would like to, um, I guess, address the council at one time is to actually, um, raise a flag for organ tissue donation, um, maybe do, uh, um, set up something at the farmer's market or some other event that we have. I'd be more than happy to run that. Um, I think it's important. It's asked on the license. When I talk to people about it, a lot of people don't know how it goes, how, they have other questions, you know, it's just like, oh, I have it on my license, or I'm not sure what I want to do. And education is really big. So, I mean, it was just a recent opportunity that I wasn't able to go to that I wanted to speak at, but I think somehow, some way, I'd like to see that more developed here in Groton City, where we could actually reach out to our community. I mean, because especially when you're talking about youth, it's a decision they have to make when they go get their license. So, I think it's, uh, it would be important to have at, maybe at the events, I could be the person and bring those other people that are on this organization that could actually come also, and I'd like to see that be developed, too.
Okay. I'm gonna want you to, there's some of these things, you're gonna need to come to the office, we're gonna talk about.
Okay.
Because I hear what you're saying, don't get what you're saying, because I don't know what your idea is. You say, okay, I wanna do this, but what does that look like?
Right.
Right? Sometimes it's this thick-
Yep.
-with all the stuff we need to do, and sometimes it's like this. So, in order to better understand and implement, I'm gonna need you to come talk to us more.
Sure.
Uh, Deputy Mayor Depot?
Don't we do several blood drives here? Maybe that would be a good thing to pair up with the organ tissue donation, um, thing? Because it makes sense.
Yeah.
Usually, probably the same people donating blood will opt to do that.
The city hosts blood drives monthly, just so you're aware.
Maybe we, is that something we could add to our list of things that you say are coming up, you know, when you usually?
Sure.
Because I don't-
We can add blood drives to the list when we talk.
Because I knew that we did them. I didn't know that we did them that often.
I didn't think that.
Well, and, well, hold on. Let me, let me tell you what this means.
That goes on our digital board.
Well, but, but let me tell you-
With food.
Well, but let me tell you what this, what they do. They have crackers. So, uh, what this means is, it's not, hey, we're having a blood drive, everybody come in, you wanna come in? It is, you, they, they have organized blood drives and you have to have an appointment. So, there is a difference, right? There's a difference in protocol, there's a difference in formality, those kind of things. Now, in your case, in what you want to do, it doesn't matter whether it's an open blood drive or whether it's a scheduled by appointment only blood drive. You could still have a table or whatever. Uh, but the thing we need to do is we need to understand what is you're looking to do, and then pair you up with them and get that set up. But that's something that, that, uh, actually, I think it'd be pretty easy.
Mm-hmm.
Any, anyone else? Anything else on goal setting?
We've got a lot for today.
We do. Today was a very good meeting. Uh, okay. In that case, I will take a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn?
Second. We have a motion of second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.